I am pleased to welcome you. My name is Tracy Larkin. I have the privilege and the honor of serving City Council District Three. We have with us today also Mr. Lee, representing District Seven, and Mr. Green, representing District Five comprising this committee. I'd just like to take a moment to set the tone for what this exercise is to be about. This is about improving and enhancing the quality of life for the citizens of Montgomery, Alabama. That's what this is all about. And the final analysis, it is not about contentiousness. It certainly is about some debate because there will be some differing ideas and opinions on how we approach this. But it is not to be an argument. It is not to be an adversarial session. It is to try to come up with a reasonable document or documents that address some of the issues that face us here in the city of Montgomery with regard to housing, with regard to commercial buildings and residential structures also that are vacant. We have made a lot of progress within the last several months on this issue. We have, as most of you probably know, allocated a good deal more funding for demolition of properties to address the issues of blight in many of our neighborhoods in the city of Montgomery. And I think we'll all agree that the problem is a real problem and it's a problem that is growing. So, we feel that as representatives of the city government and the people of this city, we have a responsibility to try to address the concerns of these people. In my district, I have several neighborhoods that have advocated for these kinds of actions for some time now. And we have been somewhat slow and reluctant to actually get something going in order to try to address some of these issues. And I understand fully the issues that they're concerned with. My neighborhoods, my historic neighborhoods such as Ethel Heights, South Holland Park, and some of the others. Even the neighborhood where I was born and raised, King Hill off of the Upper Whitaker Road here. There are some real issues that are affecting our neighborhoods and we want to see what we can do to help alleviate some of these problems. So what we want to do here today basically is to offer sort of an overview of what has been recommended by the consulting group, to offer our ideas on how we can address some of the issues with rental properties in the city. And I know some of you may have come with the idea that you wanted to address the rental registration ordinance or registration certificate ordinance that we offered at our last city council meeting. Well, if you had, you know, observed that meeting, you would have also understood that we also withdrew that ordinance at our last meeting. So it is no longer on the table to be considered. We have a lot of things going here. There's a lot of, this is, as they say, you know, a moving target. The mayor is already working on some ideas. The city's Public Works Department is already working on some ideas in conjunction with the mayor, with the chief building official, and the Housing Code Department. But we wanted to have a conversation and we wanted to make sure that the conversation took place. So, the idea for introducing the ordinance with the rental registration was not so much to vote and to try to get that through city council on a couple of meetings. It was to get some attention from some people who could help us come up with some ideas on how we address these serious issues that face us. And we will have an opportunity to talk about the report from the consultants of the agency that looked at this issue for the city. And one of the major recommendations that the consultant made was that we look at the city's business licensing ordinance as a means of looking at rental properties and regulating rental properties. And after a second, a third reading of the business license ordinance, we realized that there are some opportunities there. And we don't need to add another layer of bureaucracy with another ordinance that has to be somehow enforced. And we have so many on the books already that we're not enforcing. And we looked at the business license ordinance and we'll go through that briefly here today just to give all of us an idea, those of us who did not realize that the business license ordinance does offer some great opportunities to address some of the issues with rental properties. So we felt that we could pull the other ordinance off the table. The business license ordinance does not necessarily, however, address anything related to vacant buildings, vacant structures in the city. And we have a plethora of them. And I think you'll all agree, I can show you many of them in my district. On the Lower Whitaker Road, on the Upper Whitaker Road, here on South Decatur Street, we have two adjacent corners where we have abandoned dry cleaner buildings on both corners that have just been sitting there vacant and unused for many, many years. So we have some issues that we do need to work with. And the city of Montgomery has been, over time, has become a sort of a blight-friendly city. And I say that because we have not had aggressive enforcement of the laws which are available. And we have not looked at opportunities to make more stringent laws available to our code enforcers so that they could do a more meaningful and effective job of eradicating the city of some of the blight that we have here in our state. So just as with the naughty child who feels that he or she can get away with things and they get away with it over and over and over again, nobody cares. Nobody says anything, nobody expresses any discontent with it. People just become comfortable with it. So we've had large corporations and mid-sized companies and residential property owners who have simply not been very attentive to what they have been doing with their properties in the city because the city has expressed no concern as to how they allow these properties to just sit and deteriorate over long periods of time, even issues like litter. But we have seen a growth in the litter problem here in the last several years. I grew up here, I've been here all of my life, except for a short time in the military and graduate school in the city of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I've been here all of my life. And I've lived in a community that would be considered one of the more impoverished communities in the city, that is King Hill. But we did not have litter. We didn't have the blight that we see now in many of our neighborhoods. So this problem is a problem that has grown. But of course, nobody cares. Nobody has suggested that that's not the type of city that we intend to have here. So now that's what we want to do now. We want to set a different tone. We want to create a different mindset about how we think about our city and how we exercise a responsibility as property owners to be certain that we take pride in the properties that we own and that we respect the communities in which they are located and the communities around them. That's basically what this is really all about. And so, we are not here to fight with anyone. And we are not here to dismiss anybody's ideas out of hand. We are not in the business of trying to be punitive toward property owners, responsible property owners, people who have integrity and want to offer rental properties that are worthy of being rented. That is not the point in this. And it's not the point, the point in this also is not to try to penalize people who own vacant commercial buildings that are sitting around for eons and nobody's done anything with them. But we want to try to create an atmosphere where we at least get their attention and to convey to them the idea that the city does care and that we do have a level of pride in who we are. And when we call ourselves the capital of dreams and when we talk about the historic nature of our city and we have the unique distinction of having these major twin histories that we can promote to the rest of the world. There's no other city in the world that has this unique opportunity as Montgomery, Alabama has. So that's what this is about. And we will take a few moments to just sort of go through some things that we've already looked at and maybe to educate some people as to some of the things that have been recommended that we try to do. And this report, this is a report from the consulting company called STR out of Chicago, Illinois. And when they were initially retained, some of us sort of wondered, I think you did also, Mr. Green, why would we go to Chicago to find someone to tell us what we need to do to try to address some of the blight issues of the city? But I have since retanted in that position and I am very pleased with what was produced. I think this is a very sound donkey. And I think many of the city employees, stakeholders who have had an opportunity to read it and to digest some of what the man has put in this report will agree that it is a report worth that. And a number of things we have learned about how we can approach these issues of blight, how we can approach these issues of housing that needs to be demolished, how we can find ways to do useful things with vacant lots and overgrown lots and blighted neighborhoods all over the city. This report has really made a real difference. And so, we are here today to try to get you to help us to gain some insights into how we can approach accomplishing some of the things that we are trying to approach. So I appreciate everyone being here today. We appreciate the opportunity also today that we're being used as something of an experiment. And you see the cameras here today. At least one of them, I think, is associated with the city of Montgomery's effort now to try to find a way to bring our work sessions to the public. And that is something that we've been talking about for a very long time. Most of the meaningful discussion, those of you who are familiar with city government, know that most of the meaningful discussion that takes place with our city council takes place in the work sessions. And so when we go to the city council chamber, many citizens are persuaded to believe that we have not deliberated, that we are just marching in lockstep, that we are, you know, following the dictates of the mayor and we're simply just raising our hands and not having much to do with debating the issues. Well, most of the debating of the issues takes place in this room at 3:30 prior to going into the city council chamber. So it is useful that the public would have an opportunity to be privy to what is said in this room and not necessarily what they consider the lack of debate or conversation that they see when we go into a formal city council session. So, we appreciate the fact that we are today being guinea pigs for the television network that is now trying to fashion a way that we will be able to share our work sessions with the public as well as our formal city council meetings. So I just want to begin by saying that we've already mentioned the STR report. And we want to do a quick overview of some of the stuff that is recommended, Mr. Green in the folder that you have and Mr. Lee in the folder that you have. I have sort of made an outline of some of the highlights of what the STR report recommends for the city of Montgomery. It is a private company that's located in Fairfax, Virginia, that among other things assists cities and counties in addressing blight. And STR, this consulting firm, recommends that the city of Montgomery catalyze its neighborhood revitalization efforts by taking the following specific steps. Number one, make blight elimination a top priority. Make the elimination of blight in the city of Montgomery a top priority by forming an internal revitalization working group to lay groundwork for a revitalization program. And I think that is what is taking place now with Chris Conway and the mayor's office and having formed this internal revitalization working group to lay the groundwork for a revitalization program for the city of Montgomery. The second thing the recommendation says is to strengthen and to implement ordinances to address blight through the development of two ordinances, a rental ordinance and a vacant property regulation process. And those are two things that we tried to do with the rental registration ordinance that was put on the agenda, but once again pulled from the agenda because we don't think we need it. And the vacant property registration ordinance is another major recommendation from the consultant. The next major recommendation is to create a neighborhood revitalization program or plan to designate a senior staff person in the city of Montgomery, a senior staff person as director of neighborhood revitalization to develop and lead the program with the authority to engage the relevant city entities to execute the program. And as we have said many times, someone will say, "Well, how much is all that going to cost?" Well, it shouldn't cost us a lot. Because I believe that we have most of the skill sets already in place in city government in various places that can address most of these issues. That's what this new senior staff person's responsibility should be, to bring these various, these disparate entities together under one roof, hopefully. What I think the language used in the report was "take down the silos." That is, let's start communicating with each other. The Clean City Commission, the Bonds Program, Community Services Coordinator, Planning Department, Development Department, GIS, Community Police, Public Works, Housing Codes, all of these things that have to do with revitalization and improving the quality of life in neighborhoods, to bring all of those entities together. And that will be the responsibility of this senior staff person. The consulting group recommends that we have a senior staff person who is at the cabinet level, that is, reporting directly to the mayor or to the mayor's chief of staff. And that's what we have advocated for. The mayor has conceded that he has a position that he is now cultivating for this person or this individual, whoever this turns out to be, to take this position and to take on those responsibilities. He has decided to make that person a part of the Public Works Department, I believe. I have disagreed with that because the consultant says this person ought to be on an equal plane with the Public Works Director. But we are willing to defer in our contention that it ought to be cabinet-level for the person at this point if the mayor feels that we can make this work administratively and ease into it incrementally in this way. But this person, we would hope, would eventually, would ultimately be a senior staff person at the cabinet level who could consult with the chief of staff in the mayor's office and the mayor directly and making decisions as to how this thing can work. The consultant also, and there's a lot in here, and we're not trying to go through all of it, but also they did a summary of the legal framework that we would be dealing with, researching the laws in the state of Alabama, as we know many of them. These state laws affect what we do in the cities, in particular with landlords and tenants and rental properties and the management of properties. The firm did some research on Alabama state law. They looked at the ordinances which exist here in the city of Montgomery and also looked at best practices across the country related to the elimination of blight and blighted properties. And they came up with these conclusions, and these are very important. Concluded that the city of Montgomery has the authority to establish and to enforce standards for the maintenance of property. We already know that. The city of Montgomery has the authority to establish and to enforce laws and standards for the maintenance of properties in the city. The city of Montgomery has the authority to use the current business license ordinance to regulate rental properties and commercial properties. Now that is key because that is the reason for the abandonment of the idea of a separate rental registration and licensing certificate. Because the consultant pointed out to us that the city already has the authority to use the current business license ordinance to regulate rental properties and commercial properties in the city. The city has the authority to set standards for the designation of vacant or abandoned properties in the city. And the city has the authority to acquire and to dispose of property, including for less than market value if that is approved by the mayor's office and by the city council. Some of the highlights that came from this study. And as I said earlier, the central core of what we are considering or should be discussing here today will be the vacant building ordinance as we will not be looking at rental registration. We certainly would like some input from the business and finance department, from Attorney McInnis, as to how the business license code in the city of Montgomery relates to rental properties. Because now we do know, and we would like the public to know, that the business license ordinance in the city clearly includes rental and lease properties. It clearly says that the city ought to be licensing individuals, groups, corporations, companies that rent properties in the city, but the city has not done it. But it's already law and it's not something that we have to pass. It is something that we just simply need to enforce. And we will get around to a discussion of that, I'm sure, as well. But vacant buildings, as you know, as I said, are a growing problem in the city. They can contribute greatly to the growth of blight. They are rapidly consuming many of our neighborhoods and eroding property values all over the city. They also pose a serious danger to the public health and safety. They are detrimental to the public good. They are detrimental to the common welfare. They are unsightly, they are ugly, and we need to do something about them. So the vacant building becomes a convenient and profitable, in many instances, tax shelter for the owner of the building who oftentimes does not even live in this city or this county or this state, residing somewhere in another state. So, the intent of this ordinance, which is not perfect, we realize, and I'm sure that there are some areas that need to be addressed in it. There are some changes that need to be made to it as written as we just looked at a number of ordinances from cities around the country and tried to cull from them the best practices that have appeared to be legal and have worked in other cities. I'm sure there are still some lapses that you can help us fill. Not only our city staff, but those of you who are business people and who are stakeholders in this whole scenario as well. The intent of the ordinance is simply to discourage this pattern of behavior that we have seen, this pattern of negative behavior that has had a cumulative negative impact on the city of Montgomery. So we want to look at the ordinance. And if those of you have had an opportunity to read it, we will give you an opportunity. And certainly the members of our panel here, Mr. Art Lee and Mr. William Green will have, I'm sure, some meaningful input to offer as to what we can do to make this ordinance workable, a practical document that addresses the issues that we are trying to address in the city of Montgomery. This ordinance in summary would require owners of vacant buildings to register them and to obtain a vacant building registration certificate with a payment of a fee. The certificate would be renewable according to the way this ordinance is written in six-month increments, up to a 24-month maximum period of renewals. It doesn't have to be this way, and that's why I want you to understand that this language is malleable, it can be changed, it is amendable. But this is the model that we chose to put in the ordinance and it certainly is not in concrete. And if you have meaningful suggestions that make more sense, then certainly we are willing to listen to them. If the building is still vacant at the end of the initial 24-month period, the vacant structure would be immediately subject to an annual administrative fee. The Housing Code Department right now sends out an administrative fee notice for abatement of, for abatements that are not done in a timely manner. And the administrative fee, I think, is the amount of about $150 if they're right in this card. It's $150, and that's a fee that's levied upon a small property owner, someone who may be the owner of two or three structures across the city. But if there is an abatement issue with that property, as many of you know, and if the abatement does not take place within the legal framework of the city in a timely manner, then that property owner is assessed an administrative fee of $150 for not having taken care of the abatement in a timely manner. So if the building is still vacant at the end of the initial 24-month period, the vacant structure then would be subject to something like what the Housing Code does right now with a $150 fee if you don't fix it to their ass, an annual administrative fee. That fee would be due and payable on an annual basis for as long as the building remains vacant. Yes, we would like to get their attention. We would like to get the attention of these folks who own these vacant buildings who live in California, who live in New York, and Illinois, and Minnesota, and elsewhere. We would like to let them know that we would like them to be more responsible. And the annual administrative fee, I think, will get their attention. The certificate which would be issued for these vacant buildings, according to this ordinance, would include a statement of intent. A statement of intent, that's also very important, very key. Because a statement of intent would require the owner to provide a plan or some kind of timeline for what is supposed to be happening with this building. How long do you plan to leave the building vacant? What future uses would you envision for this building? And give us some idea of how long it's going to take you to do it. Six months, a year, two years, three? A statement of intent. What did you plan to do with the building? The vacant building would be subject to inspection upon the discretion of the city's authorized inspection officials. So in other words, what we're trying to do in this ordinance, we're not trying to set out a schedule for inspections that you have an annual inspection, you have an inspection every two years, you have an inspection every five years either. We're simply being very flexible with the language in that regard in this ordinance. We're simply saying that at the discretion of the chief building official, the authorized inspection officials in the city, if they have reason to believe that the building is not in compliance with relevant codes and they choose to inspect a building, then the building has to be made available for inspection upon the discretion of the inspection officials. The administrative fees, as set out in this ordinance, are very small, comparatively speaking. $150 for the application fee. And that application fee would increase each time the building certificate or the vacant building certificate is renewed up to that 24-month period before you move into that annual automatic administrative fee that would be levied against the building for remaining vacant. The annual administrative fee, as set out in this ordinance, would be in the amount of $350. Once again, not in concrete. Nothing is set in concrete. When there is a reasonable basis to suspect that there is a violation of the ordinance, the owner of the building would be notified and provided a period of 30 days, 60 days, whatever that happens to be, to bring the building into compliance to avoid paying a penalty or a fine. So if a building is found to be in non-compliance, the owner of the building would be notified and given a reasonable amount of time to bring the building into compliance. And of course, there would be penalties associated with this. Any person found to be in violation of an ordinance would be subject to penalties defined in of the ordinance would be subject to penalties defined in the general provisions of the city code, fines of less than a dollar to more than five hundred dollars, is what the code says. And I believe that if we can create a document that works for all of us, the building owners, the people who live near the buildings, the people who have to travel past the buildings on a regular basis, to exercise a responsibility to make our city a more aesthetically pleasing place to be, that is what we're trying to do, and to put these buildings into some useful territory and put them back on the tax rolls so that they are generating something for the city of Montgomery and the citizens of the city of Montgomery. That is sort of the highlights of what the ordinance attempts to do.
Yeah, I just want to add something, we went over the SDR recommendation, one recommendation that the consultant made was that we create a website so that, you know, all the vacant properties or properties that the city owns, we create a method so that we can easily sell the properties or rent the properties. And that's something also that for you all that own vacant properties, that we can also do your properties too, so if anyone is searching for the city website looking for properties, then we have a list of the properties that we own, as well as if you all are willing to put your properties on there, something that, you know, basically will help you all get your properties ready when somebody is looking to come to Montgomery, that's one of the recommendations that they made. But to say it all, I know when I got it off, it's something that I ran on in terms of neighborhood revitalization, Tracy had already started this years before I got in here, and what we want to do, and I think Tracy touched on it briefly, is that our objective is to improve the quality of life in the city of Montgomery, I think many of y'all out there would agree that we do have an issue. So we do not want to be punitive, and as he stated, these are just suggestions, nothing, suggestions, nothing is written in stone at the moment, so we're open to any suggestions. Some of y'all sent me a lot of emails with some suggestions already, so what we want to do is I think we all get on the same team, where we can make Montgomery better, and, you know, just improve the quality of life for the citizens here, make Montgomery a place the people want to come and invest their funds.
I think it might be also useful, since Mr. Green has just spoken, to get him to also to address the ordinance which we just passed a few weeks ago, yes, having to do with disruptive properties, and some of you may have some questions about that legislation as well. I do know that he has been the object of some scorn as a result of having sponsored that ordinance, but I would like to give him an opportunity in this video to explain what the intent of that ordinance was, and we were all in agreement, again, that something needed to be done, and so we embraced that idea. But we have also, I think, determined, and I have expressed this to Mr. Green and to the rest of the council on more than one occasion, that I think that we've also, just as we did not need the rental registration ordinance, I don't think we need the disruptive properties ordinance either. We have passed it, it is now law in the city of Montgomery. But he's well aware of the ideas that we have tried to advance, that when we look at the business license ordinance, it is fairly comprehensive, and I think it has, you know, it's far reaching in the language in that ordinance to deal with the issues that are intended to be dealt with in the disruptive property ordinance, which Mr. Green sponsored a few weeks ago. Would you like to speak?
Yes, real briefly. The objective of the, well, just a little bit, I've done some research, and there's already a case law where in that if your tenant is, commits, you know, it's basically your tenant is causing issues, and you are aware of it, that you, the tenant or the landlord can be sued by any neighbor or any residence that may be harmed by your tenant, particularly in case where, for example, if you have a tenant that is constantly, the police is constantly visiting, there is a record of you being notified, you're not doing anything, and next thing you know, there's a shootout and someone gets hurt. If the person that got hurt can prove that you did not do anything, or at least intervened, or you were asked to get involved and you didn't do anything, then you can be held liable, not for the actions, but you can be sued. And a lot of people, you know, you think about your tenants, the tenants don't really have anything, but they can go after the landlord. But what this, what my ordinance sought to do was basically was get landlords to get involved. If, for example, you get a notification that your tenant is running a drug house, or your tenant is constantly causing issues with the neighbors, police have been there several times, and you've been contacted and you did not do anything, then what this ordinance does is it, we simply, just like any of vacant, if you all have gotten a nuisance of vacant for your vacant property that the grass needs to be cut, you have 30 days to do, you know, deal with it. And you, all we asking is that you at least present a plan to us, say, hey, I've spoken with the tenant, here's what we're going to do, work out a plan. That does not mean that the tenant is still not going to go back and do something. This does not mean if your tenant is selling drugs that you're going to be brought into court for a drug charge. All we asking is that you work with the tenant and you try to work something out. It could include, it doesn't force you to evict, but in the event that eviction does come up and you do have to evict, that's not a solution. All state laws are applicable to this city, the ordinance does not supersede or go around that. If you get ready to evict someone, you have to go through the same process that you currently go through now. So all state laws are superseded this ordinance. All we seek to do is to, as by you all being down here today, I don't think it really applies to you all, but there are a lot of landlords that are not getting involved and are not concerned, it's simply to do two things. Number one, improve the quality of life of those individuals that are right now suffering and coming to me constantly saying, hey, we've got to do something with these landlords, as well as increase your property value, but the most important thing is that this will at least, if you did get involved, show that we reached out to you, you did what you tried to do to get rid of the individual, it will also protect you from any lawsuits. So that's the objective. Now, with that said, my objective is, once again, neighborhood revitalization, I passed this ordinance because I know we started this, what, six months ago, maybe longer when we got the consultant, looking at some of the recommendations, some of these things are going to take a long time to roll out. That was something that I thought that we could do now, that we could deal with now in the event, after we look at the business license. For example, one of the questions I have with the business license, let's say, for example, you have one property, but, I mean, you have 15 properties, but we have this one property that you're not doing, and you're violating for whatever reason, but the other 14 you're doing well. So if we pull your license, does that mean that you can't rent the other 14 properties? These are some of the questions that we have to ask. So these are some of the things we're looking at. My particular ordinance only applies to that one property and not the other 14 or 15 properties that you have. Now, if we find out that we can come to the same thing and get it more organized through what we're doing now, and come under a department head and it's run and managed, then we will then, I would happily, you know, we'll, you know, do away with that ordinance. But right now, this is what we have now to deal with immediate problems that we have. That's one property, when I got a report from the police, they had, the police have gone for the property the last, what, four months, they've gone 17 times. So I mean, we do have those type of properties, there's properties where individuals have shootouts every two or three months, but nothing is happening. So hopefully, we'll deal with this. Initially, I thought it was something, it's simply, you know, everybody assumes that everybody's on Section 8, but even if they pull the Section 8 support, still, the tenant has to say, well, I want to get rid of that individual, but if that individual and the landlord work something out, that person stays, as the case with a lot of other properties that we've had. So once again, this is just an effort, not to punish the good landlords, but something to deal with, the landlords that when you call, they don't, they don't do anything, all they're concerned about is the check is cleared. But in the end, this ordinance will protect you all, if you all get involved in an event that something does happen, and a lawyer decides to go after you, you can show that you've done everything you can to try to deal with that issue.
Not more than, I think we all agree, as we said, it's the, you know, it's more than one or two, but the majority of folks are running their properties the correct way, it's the ones that we have trouble with, that we're trying to address, and me personally, we need to address those without penalizing the folks that are doing what we all consider right. That being said, I don't know that, I might just want to jump into what's, you know, the ordinance that was introduced, I mean, I know, you know, just as a blanket, the word vacant in buildings, you know, if it's more than 90 days, whether it's residence or commercial property, it becomes vacant. As I've told you, and a lot of these folks will have it, I've got a cross street neighbor that moved to Auburn two years ago, his house is still for sale, he's doing everything he can to sell it, he keeps the grass up and is doing everything right there, it's not an eyesore, but under this, you know, he's fixing to have to start, besides not being able to sell a house in Montgomery, he can have one in Auburn now, he's having to pay these extra fees and do the reporting that I think is where I kind of personally have the issues with, and probably some of these folks do, is that catch between, everything's perfect about a building or a house, except for the fact that it's vacant, there's no other issues except vacancies, and I don't, you know, that's me on just a, you know, first, I guess first and foremost kind of jumps out, and just because it's vacant doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad piece of property, and I'm sure there's people in this room and through the city and state that'll say, I'm doing everything I can to sell X, you know, it's costing me Y a year or whatever else, and I'm keeping it up, why am I, you know, being quote unquote penalized even more financially and otherwise? So, and like I said, and there's several areas within there, I think that we can probably need to address and can address, and again, it's getting the ones that are causing the issues without, you know, baby in bathwater type scenario, in my opinion.
I agree, and I think that what could be done is, and saying that if a property is listed, you know, because you understand that sometimes it takes a while, you know, longer than, you know, what, six months to sell a home, and if the home is listed and it's kept up, and in this particular case, you'd be an exception to the rule, you know, same thing for commercial property, property is being listed and it's being marketed, I think that these individuals should get an exemption, and I don't think that, if anything, if there's nothing else, if we ask you six months to tell us that, hey, we're asking, what are you doing, you simply say, hey, the property is being listed, it's listed with these individuals, and at the very least, we can put it on our site. So the letter of intent would be I intend to sell, it's listed with these people, and here's the listing agreement. It would be something as simple as that, in terms of letting us know what's going on with the property. In that case, you get an exemption from the fee. So I would like to see something like that, that may help out.
Before we get started with these guys, I just got a question for Thomas Jerry, somebody. How, do we know today how many vacant properties, I guess, buildings, which would be commercial, resident, how many vacancy, vacant buildings do we have? Do we know, idea?
Well, we've done thus far is start trying to accumulate, where do you start? And so at this point, and this is not a perfect number, but between what might be considered rental type properties and vacant properties, we may have as many as 20 plus thousand that we're trying to look for, how do we address? And now of that, I don't know at this point how many are vacant, but it's big, and so it's going to take a little while to bring that number to what might be a precise calculation for both rental issues and vacant properties.
And I assume, for instance, like my neighbor's house, it's vacant, that's probably not considered in that 20, I wouldn't think, as initially.
More than likely, Ryan, now, it might not be, it's a circumstance, it doesn't be addressed. We might show him there and probably also is made with the grids, unless that's been changed in records, it'll probably show up as he lives there right now.
And just to address the issue that Mr. Lee raised about properties that may be well kept and on the market there, and as Mr. Lee has pointed out, there are exceptions that can be put into any law, and there are exceptions in this law. There have been questions raised, and we can add more exceptions as well, and certainly a property that's on the market that is actively being promoted for sale should be exempt from something like this. But here are some of the exemptions that are already in the law. It would exempt religious, owned by religious organizations, educational organizations, this big word emacinary, which has to do with charities, benevolent or charitable organizations, which have been so recognized, tax exempt status, was from the federal, state, and municipal government. Exempt also would be government agencies, which shall include the local housing authority, that is to say that they would not be included in this, the Gist Department of Housing and Urban Development, or any other governmental agency shall be exempt from the registration fee as well. So there are exemptions, and there can be other exemptions that makes sense.
Now, that exempts them from the fee, but it doesn't exempt them from the fact that they need to upkeep their property, correct?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Then the fine, which you mentioned, between $100 and $500 could be assessed, assuming that they violate the policy.
So we'll get to, we'll give all of our stakeholders an opportunity to make any statements that they would like to make in just a moment. Any other discussion about this at this point, from this venue's point? Before we go, before we get to our stakeholder input, and our city employee input, I would just like to just put a little flesh on the whole thing about the business license ordinance. And I just pulled out a couple of passages here, there is hereby levy, and I'm reading from the law, that if business license tax for the privilege of doing any kind of business, trade, profession, or other activity by whatever name called within the city or its police jurisdiction, so the law says that anyone who does business of any kind in the city of Montgomery should be subject to a business license fee. Business, this is the ordinance once again, means any commercial or industrial activity for any enterprise, trade, profession, occupation, calling, or livelihood, including the lease or rental of residential or non-residential real estate. That is what the law says. So I just wanted to just make us all aware that the law does say that residential and commercial real estate ought to be subject to a business license. I know there are some issues with rental properties as compared to other businesses, how the amount of the license fee would be determined. Generally speaking, I believe the amount for business license fees are set according to the gross receipts of business. So the question would be, does this mean that the amount of the business license should be based on the total amount of rents collected by the individual or by the company or the corporation? That is something that would have to be worked through. One idea would be to look at the fee schedule, which was in, is in the formally proposed rental business, rental registration ordinance, which has a sliding scale fee for registration, and I think this is what it says, properties with 20 or more dwellings, $75, fewer than 20 but more than three, $50, three or fewer dwellings, $25. That, those are the fee schedules that are set out in the ordinance which we have abandoned. That's an idea that could be considered as soon, in determining what the business license fee would be for these properties. The other major issue it seems to be would be, as Mr. Green alluded to earlier, the business license ordinance states that the license for the business has to be location specific. So the question then is, should there be one license issued to multiple properties rented regardless of where the properties are located, or shall a single license be required for each separate tax parcel? I think that we would all consider that impractical, to try to have a single license for each tax parcel that the property owner was in control of. So I think that the idea would be to try to find a way to have one license issued to multiple properties that are rented regardless of where the location of the properties happen to be. And those are some of the major issues I would think that have to be worked through in order to try to figure out how do we levy the business license fee for rental properties.
I think another issue too is, once we pull it for violation in one location, how do you handle, can this? how do you handle, can this individual now not rent property anymore? I mean, can he, I mean, when people live in his home at this point, and mortgages due, is this person allowed to continue to rent these properties? And do we force them to sell those properties? That's, that's the tricky part, once the license has been pulled, if we.
I don't think you can force them to sell.
That's what I'm saying, I know we can't just stay. So, what I'm saying is, at that point, how does, because we can go in, I think you can put a lock on it. Right now, if you pull a license at a club or something, you can, you know.
But you're harming more than just that person, though. You're harming more than just the person that is doing it. If I'm renting a house from you, your license gets pulled, I didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, 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 so now I've got to move. Yeah, yeah, so those, that's the tricky part with the license. And, and, and that's the part, I'm, I'm, I just need to know how you're going to work that out.
And I don't think it would be necessary, I, 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 certainly would be necessary if there were multiple properties being rented, and one property was, um, delinquent, uh, that the individual would be forced to not rent any of the properties because of one delinquent property. I think that, of course, once again, uh, a creative approach to this can exempt the other properties that are in compliance, and they would continue to, they could, could, to, continue to be rented and to generate income.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, as long as we, you know, we, we make allowances for that. But like you stated too, if, if, I don't know, the business license, if, if to no fault of the person that's living in the property, maybe the, the business owner of the property is the one that's in violation, then what happens to the person that's living in the property? You know, that has leased, that says he can stay there for a year. So, I mean, we just probably make sure that, um, take into account the situation, don't create something that, 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 that.
Well, we certainly have some very bright and inventive minds in our city finance department, and, and, and in our building and housing codes departments. And I'm sure they can find ways to administratively make these ideas work.
Let that, let, let, those are the precise types of examples of what is, is, is holding up the effort. And what we're trying to identify are amendments we can make to the ordinance to accommodate that. Because Lee hit nail on the head. I mean, you've got a landlord that doesn't pay his licensing. I'm not sure we've got the authority to evict the tenant. Uh, so, but there must be amendments we can make to the ordinance that the person will, then. Again, as Mr. Green said, if, if the club doesn't pay his bill, if the court doesn't pay his license, we come to you guys, we close the padlock. We can't really do that to a resident, to a tenant. But there are things we can, and, and refer to accord or, or something, that would be specific. Again, you guys don't like to have ordinances that we can enforce. That's probably an example for it. You're probably not allowed to kick a tenant out because the landlord didn't get his license. Look for ways to remedy.
I think though, I do, I think though, I think that problem could be remedied with the landlord being cited for being in non-compliance of the law and, and, and being brought, I mean, to the court of law and, and penalized and fined for renting a house that is not in compliance. And I don't think that would be a very comfortable existence for most folks. So, I don't really think that we need to get into talking about evicting people or having to have any business with a tenant. I think that, that the responsibility would be with the property owner who has, who is operating a business without a license, and, and, and who can be brought into the municipal court environment and fined five hundred dollars for operating a business without a license. I think that would get his attention or her attention. I believe it's workable. Any, that this could.
Excuse me, sir. Uh, do you, uh, can, can you take the tank question now or later?
Just a moment, sir. We will get to questions. I'd like to give, uh, 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 other city officials here who would be directly affected by this, uh, or trying to craft something that would, uh, be amenable to, to, to most parties concerned, that could be a practical approach to, to, to getting something done. Mr. Russell, would you like to make some statements? Because this certainly would, uh, would have a lot to do with your department.
Oh, sure. Um, I guess first of all, over the past two years, you know, I've been in a lot of your neighborhood association meetings. And so, uh, being present at those, and I've, I've heard your concerns related to, uh, the rental issues, the property issues. And as we adopted the, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash, uh, twenty-seventeen this year, I could go in there and show you where a lot of your concerns are being addressed within that ordinance. Uh, but it takes time. I say that is, is the adoption of the twenty-fifteen building code. And I believe I saw Jimmy Rutland in here. Uh, Mr. Rutland is a member of our, uh, Home Builders Association, and he was probably tired of seeing my face, because all of so much of what we had to do is go out into the community that it will affect and address their concerns related to how this new building code will affect, in this case, louder new homes as they move forward. As we run into problems, we've run into problems over the past week in relation to some of those changes. And so, straight up, an ordinance is perfect. And so, as we're looking for the tweaks that are necessary to do that, then, then certainly this becomes one of them. And I'm glad to see there's, uh, a work group together for that purpose. Uh, wanted to address a few things that you may have mentioned of earlier. Um, that being one of them, that started, uh, announcement over two years ago. You just adopted my twenty-seventeen ordinance in March of this year, started in twenty-fifteen. Um, you made mention of a cabinet-level person. At this point in time, and I don't want to speak out of place, but I did hear the mayor say the other day that that person is Mr. Chris Conway. He said that during a work session earlier. Uh, Mr. Conway has since gotten with me. Uh, he got with me. Uh, and, and so, our department held a position that was quite capable of supporting an individual with, with the necessary criteria to, to be placing, uh, in, in a position to look in-depthly at, at the needs that have been put together through the, uh, S.T.R. report, through your rental licensing and certification, uh, ordinance, and through the vacant structures ordinance, to, to pull that information together. Uh, a lot of the essential functions that went into that job description come from those three documents. And, uh, and so, uh, that, that position has been filled. It was filled September the twenty-second of this year. Mr. Thomas Carr is now the Assistant Chief Building Official, uh, slated with the, uh, the, 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 the command to begin an in-depth study of all of these things that you were requesting or asking about. Um, and so, as that has transpired at this point, Mr. Conway's also linking together other portions of key people within the city. I believe Ms., uh, uh, Berry, Regina Berry, I believe, has been, she, she will be coming to twenty-five Washington Avenue for the sole purpose of, of, of giving assistance to, uh, the need through the bonds, uh, her specialty. Um, uh, Ms., uh, I've, I've had several conversations with Claire Watson, who couldn't be here today because of a conflict. But, uh, there's not a person in this room who knows her that doesn't know that her heart has been, uh, involved in such activities as you were so concerned over for twenty-plus years. Um, I, I don't know all the rest of the key players. I do know the Clean City Commission will be brought into it, and, uh, Mr. Conway has already been meeting with the police. Uh, uh, and so, uh, those organizational things are coming together. As I made mention early, earlier, if we're talking about twenty thousand-plus properties that, that, that all of we're speaking of here today has to embrace, then there has to be a lot of things in order before we begin the process of making the community comply with some standard and, and having personnel in place to specifically address these issues. Uh, your, your concerns have been heard, and, uh, and from the mayoral level, it's moving forward, and it's doing so as fast as I've seen anything since I've been here.
Thank you very much. And I, I think it would be useful to also, um, relate, um, to, to, to our committee and to the audience that, um, some of the, some of the, um, steps that you have outlined for us that have been taken already, we were not aware of. I do believe the mayor alluded to them at the last city council meeting, suggesting that at our next meeting, Chris Conway would make a presentation to bring us up to speed as to what has been done in the development of this mechanism that will be a part of city government that will address these neighborhood issues. And, uh, Mr. Carr, you have, um, uh, today given us, um, an announcement that he has been promoted to that position?
Yes.
The position of pulling this whole thing together, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I don't think that, um, the city could have found a better qualified individual. Um, with your experience in, um, the housing codes department, um, uh, and first as a partner in ranks, and now as a editor, uh, for the last several years, uh, I, I, I assume that, uh, the level of knowledge that you bring, uh, to the table will, will facilitate the, the forward movement of this in, in a, in a rapid-fire manner. And, and you say this is moving faster than anything you've seen happen in the city yet?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Because we have, this city has been very resistant to change. Um, there are some very ingrained, um, habits that not, were not necessarily the more, more desirable habits that, that have affected our city habit for a very long time. And so, that when we try to make change, uh, there's, there's, uh, you know, historically, a lot of pushback. But I am happy to know that, as you have said, that with your experience, this is moving faster than most of the other things that you've seen develop here in the city. And I appreciate that. That means then that Mr. Carr's position as, as Director of Housing Codes is open?
Uh, it will be open as soon as we can move through the big process called city government.
I'd like, uh, Mr. Carr, what are, what are your, what are, what are your thoughts about this whole effort, uh, this initiative in, in, in particular? Since you will be, um, you will be the, the point guy in, in, in making all of this happen? What, what are your thoughts about this? What do you have to do to have it?
The first step that we've already begun is, uh, is to start compiling data of these properties and trying to, uh, identify and map and, and use the G.I.S. department to identify where the problematic, problematic properties are. Um, there's several sources of the data to come from. Uh, one is the county data where they, uh, delineate what type of properties they are. Uh, we've already identified, uh, many properties just based on the ownership versus the location of the property, where that mailing goes. So, they may be homeowner properties, or they may be tenant properties just, just by the description of the mailing address for the tax notice. So, uh, we've got several spreadsheets already going. And now, it's a matter of taking everyone's data and bringing it together and analyzing it.
Mr. Russell mentioned, uh, uh, bonds, and I think most of our neighborhoods are very familiar with the bonds organization and Regina, uh, and the work that she does. Uh, and as I said earlier, I think that there are other, like, city government entities. You mentioned G.I.S., uh, community policing, and, uh, I assume a number of others. Um, what other parts of city government do you see connected, we brought into this whole, under this umbrella, that can address these problems?
Of course, we've already spoken about the business license and the rental registration, uh, the vacant property, uh, ordinance that you proposed. We reviewed that, and I tried to see how we can address those through the new building code that we've adopted. Um, the, uh, Neighborhood Response Team, uh, meets at the council. So, that's a, uh, a, a police organization that, uh, I've already attended two meetings with them. So, it's, it's addressing, trying to get into the neighborhoods and address the problems that are within the neighborhood.
I have a question. Uh, as any discussion, uh, taking place regarding, uh, listing the properties that we currently have, uh, I know that's a huge effort. Uh, you know, we have some properties that are owned by the city, state, county, as well as, um, all the liens that are on them, or, or, you know, basically, I, I remember one of the major projects was, was to come up with a website or a way for people to log in, and they could just see that, and then they can put in, uh, to purchase those properties. Basically, just streamline the, the property purchasing process.
You know, when you go to search properties, uh, uh, through the probate office or through the revenue office, uh, they're all indexed by name anyway. So, those databases, it's, uh, really a, a training, uh, situation to where people don't know how to access the data that's there already. We've got great databases that are out there that people simply don't know how to access.
And what we, what we were seeking to do though is basically, you know, for example, if I want to go to Zillow, I can do a search, and all the properties come up. I can see all the, something, something like that, not putting the training on, on the user. I mean, most users know how to use the internet. They can just click on it and say, okay, let me see all the properties. The, the unique situation that we have with the city properties is that there are liens, there's a lot of things need to be done. Uh, also, it needs to be a, a, because I, I was talking to, I think, Claire Watson, and that's, she was telling me how involved, how some of these properties require lawyers to clear the title. So, there's a process for us to make it easier, and that needs to be put in place so that if an individual wants to buy a property, we need to know the liens, we need to know the process, what is on the city, state, county. Um, that process needs to be streamlined. And that's, comes under your department, so hopefully we will understand that that's something that we need to look at. Because I know we got bonds, we got community policing. You know, one of the major things is to make it easier for these properties to be acquired so that individuals, investors like the people in this room, can know what we have, can come in and can easily take these properties off our hand and turn them into.
Always define it in state law as far as how to acquire the title.
Okay, but we need, we were saying is, it, it's not a, it's, it's not a simple process right now in the sense that even how to acquire the title, how long it's going to take? If one of these people wanted, wanted to buy a property, they need to know the process that they have to take. And we need to document it, streamline it, and don't make it so difficult. Or at least hire somebody, somebody needs to be hired.
So, you're just talking about properties of city?
Cities, state, county, any, I mean, you know, like, if that takes a governor's house. I think that's owned by the state.
We don't, I mean, you're told.
And the bottom, that's what I'm saying. But we're, we, we need, we're, we're, like, you know, we need to be the place that can say, because people call me and ask me about the property. So, we just need to make sure that we can, that was one of the issues that we need to do. Say, okay, this, this is owned by the state, here's the contact number, here's how you do this. If nothing else, when we make our vacant property database or the list, I assume it's going to be in the spreadsheet somewhere, that that's, if nothing else, we can point them into the right people and give them the process or the paperwork and walk them through the streamlined, the purchasing process. Because they called me and asked me, who owns this? So, then I got to tell them, you know, then they asked me about another property. That should be something I should say, go to this website, type in the address, and it'll tell you everything you need to do, who you need to contact. And that's something that we need to provide, streamline the process. If nothing else, just point them in the right direction. Later on, we can hire people to, you know, at a cost to the, to the person to fire or whatever.